Honestly, it's the first time I've used the gavel. But thank you all for being here. We'll do the Call to Order Pledge of Legions roll call and then we'll have some brief statements, I think. Nothing regarding the investigation or the process or anything like that, that is not what we're here for this evening. Okay? So, no offense to the press, if you're here for that, you've come to the wrong place. It's strictly for our community this evening, okay? Where they can find resources, what resources are available to them, and certainly there are B-Dogs, of course, too. So, but that's why we're here, okay? We'll start with the Pledge of Legions. If you could all please rise. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go into the roll call. Mr. Lincoln.
Here.
Mr. Keg.
Here.
Mr. Shaver.
Here.
Mr. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Wirt.
Here.
Ms. Bressler.
Here.
Ms. Drobnik.
Here.
Mayor Keg.
Here.
And Mr. Murray.
Here.
Borough Council held an executive session on Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM to discuss a personnel matter in regards to an alternate candidate selection for the Police Department Administrative Aid position, and we're also adding in strategy related to police-related emergency management. At this time, if we could all please take a moment of silence for those who were tragically lost on Friday evening. Thank you. We have no agenda amendments coming out of executive session. Prior to public comment, I would like to, once again, thank everyone for being in attendance this evening. Like I said, we're here to share resources for our community who suffered a devastating loss on Friday. To that end, we have a handful of representatives here from numerous places for all of our community to utilize during this time. And, you know, certainly, I can speak for myself personally when I say that I will utilize some of these resources myself. This has been a really difficult weekend for all of us, and, you know, our council members were right in the thick of everything, and I will never complain about how tired I am ever again after seeing the service of our police and firefighters and EMTs, our Public Works Department, who I've regrettably left out of a lot of my public statements, but they're, they've been here the whole time, too. I mean, they were the first ones trying to clean up the street to allow some of the larger equipment in for Saturday morning. Would also like to thank the emergency team, who, once again, regrettably have been left out of a lot of this, but certainly, they were the ones receiving phone calls, and I heard about them today and heard about them last night. We had a CISM meeting at Redding Hospital where we saw a lot of the first responders, some nurses, a lot of people that were involved from Friday on. And there's an incredible sense of pride in this community for how we've all come together, and incredible admiration for those who have risked their lives during the search process, during, you know, the cleanup process. It's been, like I said, very, it's been a harrowing experience, certainly, but also a very grateful one in seeing how this community has come together so far. So, to anyone out in the community, and like I said, myself included, please utilize these resources. Utilize the mental health resources that we have available. Like I said, I've seen and heard things from this past weekend that I can't forget. And certainly, a lot of people at this table have the same feelings as I do, and I would encourage everyone to please utilize what we've brought together, and don't be ashamed of using all of it. You know, I'm trying to be as strong as humanly possible this entire weekend, but at some point in time, it'll certainly all come crashing down, and at that point, I will need to lean on others, because I can't do so myself. But that's why you're all here. So, at this time, Mayor Samantha Keg has brought together a lot of these individuals, while I was tied up with other things, but I do know that we have members of the community here from Holcomb. If you'd like to stand and say just a few words.
Sure. I'm from Mental Health Developmental Disabilities Program, so we're the county program, and we actually contract with Holcomb and the person from Holcomb here tonight as well. So, crisis intervention is one of the services that we actually fund in the community for anyone who needs that service. Again, I think I said this last night, but everyone's crisis looks different. Everyone calls for different reasons. There's no bad call. It's a 24-hour number, seven days a week. They also are able to mobily respond to situations when they're needed. And we have other services that are available in the community as well, counseling services, and we have intake and referral. So, all of those things are services that we can make available to individuals who need them. Right now, actually, we have what we call our Emergency Behavioral Health Response Team, which is something that our county program manages, and that's where we have clinicians and other community partner volunteers that are part of a team, and we respond to situations like this, big and small. Larger disasters, bank robberies where employees have been impacted, all those kinds of things. And so, right now, they're actually, they've been mending a telephone line in a walk-in center with Palmer during the day, and of course, Holcomb is still taking phone calls and responding as well. So, I don't know if you want to say anything?
We basically said that we have the lines 24 hours a day. We're actually doing walk-ins as well in our office up on the roundabout in the circle of Buttonwood, and we could go out as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
And I brought information that you guys could hand out to anybody who needs it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that we have representatives from the Redding Hospital here as well.
My name is Sherwood, and I am one of the chaplains of the Spiritual Care Department, and we've been happy to give out information to anybody that needs it on bereavement support groups in the area for those that have lost a loved one, as well as filter out the additional information that's provided here tonight should anybody call our office looking for support.
Thank you. We can also turn over to K-9 Crisis Response. We have Debbie here and Piper.
My name's Debbie Grusel. This is one of my two crisis, sit up. You can't see us. This is one of my two members of the Crisis Response K-9 team. We and they have special training, special certification. Many of the team members are CISM-trained. I will be as of next month. They are, our motto is "Strength Through Comfort." They respond, unfortunately, to a lot of disasters, mass shootings. There is a team on the way to Nashville tomorrow, and they will activate within days. And I'm not mentioning any names. Some of them are in here, took advantage of the comfort a dog can bring. Dogs are nonjudgmental. They're so intuitive, and they just latch themselves onto the people who need them the most. And I'm just very happy. I hooked up with Samantha the other day, and here we are.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Piper.
Now, we also have Ralph, who's sitting in the back there, if you'd like to stay in the chat.
My name's Ralph Johnson. I'm part of the Berks County Fire Department Chaplains Organization, and I'm with the Showington Fire Department. So, we're here as well as chaplains for services, not only to first responders, but also to the community and to public officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, sir.
And we also do have some local officials here. We can start with representatives from Senator Schwenk's office.
Good evening. I'm Tom Gunbar from Senator Schwenk's office. I'm here with my colleague Spencer Thornburg. I just want to commend our local EMS members of council, Mayor Keg, for the outstanding job and response you've done this weekend to this tragedy and to the community for coming together. Senator Schwenk could not be here tonight. She's out of town, but she did want us to be here to let you know that we're there to help, along with the representative's office. Just a quick thumbnail, on Monday morning, we followed up with the governor, asking his administration for additional assistance on three fronts. One, assistance to help the borough and the EMS responders, fire, ambulance. If you need funding to help replenish what you've put out in the response, please let us know. I know it's probably a little early to aggregate that, but we do have the opportunity to make that effort. We've already reached out to our leadership and appropriations, and they're willing to help. So, as that moves forward, let us know. We can certainly help walk you through the application process. Secondly, help for those who may have been displaced from business, their businesses and work. We've asked the Department of Labor and Industry through the governor to make available rapid response to help people sign up for benefits, particularly unemployment compensation, should that become necessary. That is going to be made available through the local Workforce Development Board, PA Career Link. There will be representatives available in person to help people sign up. That's usually not the protocol. I usually have to do it online, but in this case, given the extraordinary circumstances, that's available now. And finally, for the businesses, you know, not just Palmers, but for any of the small businesses, there also is some help out there through the Commonwealth that we can help connect them with those resources. I know with Representative Fidesz-Cepeda, we'll work together to make sure that those resources are available. So, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
And then we do have Representative Johani Cepeda present here with us as well.
Good evening, everyone. You know, I echo the sentiments of Senator Schwenk's office. Thank you, Tom. I, you know, I don't have words to describe, like, just how I feel about what occurred, but I do admire how everyone's come together, and everyone is kind of like rolling up their sleeves and doing whatever within their reach to help and assist. And I want you all to know that you're not alone, right? We are in this together. This is a community, and anything and everything that you can think of, right, despite our state services and so on, like, we're here. We're here to support you. If you want to delegate to us, if you need a break, whatever you can think of, like, please reach out. Some of you have my cell phone numbers. I'm down the street, 1111 Penn Ave. I'll be here, you know, as fast as I can, whatever. It could be the smallest to the largest. You're not alone. We're in this together. I'm going to get through this together, so I just wanted to extend that to you all, okay? Thank you so much.
And thank you so much for all you've already done. I know that council president has called upon you and UGI's office a couple times this week to, for help for displaced families, and you guys have done an amazing job with quick responses.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Does any other member, before we open the floor, does any other member of council?
Donna.
We do have Donna. I was going to allow her to do it during public comment, but yes, we do have.
Wait, wait for public comment. That's fine. I'm here. Thank you.
Does any other member of council wish to speak before we open the floor?
You said it well.
Yeah, agreed.
Couldn't say it better.
Like I said, I'll never be able to find the words or the depth of, you know, the English language to just say how incredibly proud, yeah, let's try that again, incredibly proud I am of this community and how we've come together and how incredibly grateful we are to everybody involved. Like I said, from Public Works to, you know, those answering the phones on the other end of the lines, you know, when the calls were coming in, to police, fire, EMTs, to USAR, who was here, you know, we'll have an exhaustive list provided for us, I'm sure, and, you know, in our April meeting, we'll move it down to the fire companies so that we can accommodate as many people as we humanly can to try to scratch the surface on thanking everyone for everything that they've done.
Absolutely. And I know I can speak for myself, along with everyone else, that, you know, we're still here for support and guidance and finding resources for the families and those affected. So, we're, our journey has just begun here, and, you know, even though things have gone over to investigative side for the scene, we are still here and wholeheartedly working hard for the community, and we will be reaching out to representatives, and so please don't ever hesitate to reach out for anything, even this latest question is a good question.
And then just one more quick update before public comment. I apologize, we'll eventually get to it. Had a quick phone call with Kevin Murphy of the Berks County Community Foundation before our executive session at 6:30, and so far, that fund has $330,000 plus in receipts, which has completely blown out of water any expectation that they had. I think they were expecting, you know, obviously, they, this is not the first time that they've done this, or a organization like them have done this, so they were able to kind of compare and contrast a bit. And a similar incident received less than half of what has come pouring in so far for these, for this community and these families affected. So, that's absolutely incredible and should be commended. So, like I said, Berks County Community Foundation, you can mail them a check or you can donate online. It's all available to you. So, please continue to do so. And again, I made sure that we told Kevin that if we never see a dime, I know that we're listed on there for a potential memorial or anything else, but I will be thrilled if we never see a dime of it, and it all goes to the people affected, so. That being said, at this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Donna, we can start with you.
I'll lay your residents first. Lay your residents first.
Do we have any residents with public comment at this time? Jim.
I want to say thank you. Thank you for what you people did. Personal input, 47 years ago, on a good Friday, and I happened to be off work, there was a house fire at 413 Franklin, 415, 417, and 419 Franklin Street. I live at 425, two doors away. I saw personally what the whole community, as far as the fire emergency, everybody. I was dumb enough, running around, I picked up at a hydrant, a hose, I don't know, 20-foot, Chad would have to verify, 20-foot, whatever line it was, and I ran it up to a ladder truck, a city ladder truck, that was in front of the old West Reading High School, and I wanted to give it to the guy, and the elderly gentleman looked down at me, I was only forty-some years old. Sonny, this is a ladder truck. Get lost. I returned the hose back to the hydrant. I had two neighbors and a grandchild and grandmother in my house that day, but I saw what the community would have cried. It was a thing we do. I saw it then, I saw it now, and that's why I say thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anyone else from the community? I know that we have Bethany here. Yeah, go ahead.
We're here from Bethany Luther from church on Franklin Street, and we're going to open the church on Friday night before the memorial, and Stacy, why don't you tell them a little bit?
Anybody can show up, starting at 6 o'clock. If anybody wants to donate any type of snack or treat for everybody there to enjoy, they can drop that off at 5 o'clock, but we will open the doors for anybody who wants to meet there, to walk from there down over the bridge, socialize there. We will then open it up afterwards, if anybody wants to gather there afterwards as well.
And we're also looking for anything else we can do to help. I mean, if we want to have a healing service or anything like that, just let us know, and we're willing to do anything. The food pantry can be open for people that have been displaced or need food or anything like that. Just give us a call with the church, and we want to do whatever we can.
If anybody needs a place for memorial services, we can open up our doors gladly.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kate, do you have anything? I mean, thank you for being here and offering your services as well.
I'm happy to help. I'm just heartbroken, and for what it's worth, I helped to coordinate the metropolitan response to September 11th, when I lived in Hoboken, which is of a similar scale. I can offer my experience from what worked in that scenario, and my heart goes out to everyone. I think the biggest thing is there's a healing arc, and it takes a while, and everybody's response happens on a different timeline, and so I think it can be very important for people to be open to an extended period of time where they might want to reach out for services. Most people are still probably numb, and it's really going to start to kick in over the next, you know, month or two, and even further out. So, any way in which I can be helpful. But what you're starting to put in place is really solid, and I commend all of you for your thoughtfulness and how you synthesized a very thoughtful and compassionate response.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else from the community? Sure, go ahead.
I'm Doug Alexey. I live on Redding Avenue.
I know your son, Redding United, super fan.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, and like, almost all of us here, you know, we were, you know, here when it happened, and, you know, our house shook, too. I just wanted to ask the Borough Council, because I don't think we've gotten an answer back from UGI. Prior to Friday, there were signs from UGI all around, like, on our block and then going up around the corner on Third, and I didn't know if, like, the gas infrastructure, if there was something wrong going on there, if it could possibly be connected to anything down there.
That was just paving utilities. Paving repair spots that they had already dug open to do repairs at previously, even if it was from a year or two years ago. They're finally catching up on some of the stuff, so they put out the no parking signs. They still do a PA1 call. They cut it, dig it out, replace it. That's 90% of the stuff throughout the whole borough is, if you see no parking signs, they were all pulled off of that recently because they're concentrating their efforts down on the southeast side, so. Once all that's settled, they'll get back to paving again.
Nice, Stephen. I'll see you over there. So, appreciate it.
Donna, I think it's your turn now.
First of all, I'm here on behalf of the nearly 100,000 residents of the city of Redding to offer our condolences and our support in whatever way we possibly can. You know, for those of us who live in a city, we had no idea what happened when the sound occurred, when the flood occurred, and it was heartbreaking to know what everyone was going through over here. But the way you have all stepped up to the plate makes me proud to be a public servant. You have been exemplary to your constituents, to the outside world, your transparency, your compassion, your thoughtfulness, your calm in the face of this kind of devastation is a lesson to all of us who are public servants. Mayor, if I wore a hat, I would tip it to you nonstop. You have been extraordinary. Ryan, all of you, you have our profound admiration, along with our condolences. Anything we can do to be of help, I know our first responders have been working closely with all of your folks, and certainly, the mutual aid throughout Berks County has been extraordinary in this circumstance, and we are all neighbors. And think of us as a city of Redding, not just the bridge connecting us, but you're sort of in the middle of our metro area, because you're part of Redding over here, part of Redding over there, part of Redding over here. Think of it as we're wrapping our arms around you, you know? We're wrapping our arms around you, and we will do whatever we can to offer whatever we can, help, assistance, comfort. And Friday night, we'll be here. Mayor, what a nice change of venue, so peaceful, quiet beside the stream. We can really memorialize those lost. It was such a good place to do it, in the quiet, where our two communities are blended by a little footbridge. You'll be coming from here, and we'll be coming from ours, but we're all together. So, again, on behalf of all of us in government and all our citizens, there's just no words for us to really say how highly we think of you, how much we respect you, and just, our hearts are with you always. Let us know what you need.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Can I just think on that change?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
So, just kind of going off of what Donna just said, obviously, we are hosting a candlelight vigil for the affected parties, for the family, the friends. Bethany Luther in church, thank you so much for your kind, and I don't mean to change the area, but obviously, Penn Dot, it's hard to close down that bridge with Berks Jazzfest happening. We have chosen to move the venue down to the West Reading Fire Company. There's a footbridge. When you go over it, the right side is a large open field. We are going to host it at that space so that, number one, we're not being affected by the noise. We're able to gather peacefully, like Donna said, next to the stream. We're able to have a memorial that we can stay, keep there, that people walking the park system can pay respects to. We're able to open up our fire department, thank you so much, Chad Moyer, for people that would like to donate food for the participants, and we're able to do that so that bridging Redding and West Reading together for our mutual support. This is not a party. This is a celebration of life. We ask anybody that is affected, your loved ones, your coworkers, and even above, to bring pictures, bring stories. Let us grieve together as a community so that we can heal together in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sam. So, that'll be Friday.
And we will be releasing more details via social media and trying to get the date, I mean, not the date, the location change out there for everybody, so we will be relying on our businesses and one not to be able to make that happen. Thank you so much.
Fully intend on, I know I can speak for myself, but starting with Bethany.
Yep.
And walking down.
Yes. We encourage our West Reading community to walk so that we can have parking for the Redding residents to join us, and walking together, please.
I can also ask if a large parking lot at St. Gerhard could be made available for that evening. I'll check on that tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment online? Do the little hand raise, but not even my wife. Okay. Usually, these meetings are fairly lighthearted. We get a lot done. We generally have a pretty, I like to think that we have a pretty good time doing it.
So we will be relying on our businesses and whatnot to be able to make that happen. Thank you so much.
Fully intend on, I know I can speak for myself, but starting with Bethany.
Yep.
And Walking Down.
Yes. We encourage our West Reading community to walk so that we can have parking for the Reading residents to join us in walking together, please.
I can also ask if a large parking lot at St. Gerhard could be made available for that evening. I'll check on that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment online? I can do the little hand raises, but not even my wife. Okay. Usually, these meetings are fairly lighthearted. We get a lot done. We generally have a pretty, I like to think that we have a pretty good time doing it. This is obviously different, but sorry. So I closed the floor to public comment at this time. And we'll move forward into our ordinances and resolutions. So before you, you have Resolution 2023-4. So on March 25th, 2023, around 1:00 a.m., Mayor Cag signed a proclamation of local disaster emergency, which allows us to certainly be eligible for any and all emergency funds available for emergency services that go far and beyond our small community. So thank you for doing that in the early hours. That one lasts seven days. So we're here tonight to extend it beyond that. I believe that as of right now, it is extended through our next scheduled council meeting of April 18th, at which time we will extend it again if necessary. Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion to adopt the extension.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Cag.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lincoln. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into the Borough Managers' Report.
Surprisingly enough, I only have one action item for you. I need consideration to authorize the closure of South Second Avenue from Franklin Street to Penn Avenue and the 100 block of Cherry Street until such time as local, excuse me, and state officials deem it safe to reopen.
It's not to say that it's currently unsafe, but it is under investigation at this time. And until it is released back to the borough and everything is completed, we will be keeping South Second Avenue closed.
I did have one question. The, it says local, state. I would add federal as well. It's a good point. Absolutely.
With that change, looking for a motion to close down South Second Avenue from Franklin Street to Penn Avenue and the 100 block of Cherry Street until such time as local, state, and federal officials deem it safe to reopen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shaver, the second by Mr. Wirt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we'll open the floor to our second round of public comment. Does anybody have anything else?
I'll say something. So we live right at the top of Linden Lane, the top of which, like that hill, was closed after the explosion. We were there within minutes. And I want to commend you guys. Well, first, my condolences to everyone who lost someone and was impacted. But thank you, guys. I think this has been really hard for our community, but seeing elected officials who have day jobs and families literally out there day and night, the entire weekend, has been really touching. And just thank you. It's really beautiful to see everyone coming together and putting in hard work and hours and their heart into everything. I've literally seen every single one of you at that site, day and night, all weekend. So you guys have gone above and beyond and it's really inspiring. So thank you. We love you. You guys are doing great. Just hold it together.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? No offense, but Lance, I see you back there. And apologies. You guys, fire police, you always seem to get left out from one thing or another. And I apologize. But fire police, we've had how many different, probably a dozen different fire police, you know, groups come together to aid as well, including our own here in West Reading. So my hat's off to you and apologies for kind of skipping over fire police. But you guys, what you guys do is also important. Yes. And...
We appreciate it.
Wanted to make sure that I threw that out there. Anyone else?
Do you have a quick?
Sure. But yeah, go ahead.
So a group of unsung heroes that you have here in the borough, and I heard them mentioned just briefly, but near and dear to my heart, or due to my past employment, is your Public Works Department. They were called to do things beyond what any public works person should ever be called to do. They stepped up to the plate for hours and hours on end. So I just want to make sure the Public Works Department here in West Reading is very recognized for what they did beyond the call of expected for public works people. Thank you.
Absolutely. And actually, that was part of my comment. I wanted to give a large shout out to our Public Works Department. Friday night, when we were at the Incident Command Center, we had our Public Works employees and director literally giving the jackets off their backs, the sweatshirts off their backs, to employees that were displaced, employees that were looking to go home, victims that were looking to get housing and get resources. So, I mean, I couldn't be more proud of our Public Works Department. And I know they get overlooked at times. I mean, we have an amazing fire department. We have an amazing police department. We have amazing borough employees. Cindy, I see you over there. Everybody is working really, really hard and we have great elected officials. So I just want to make sure our Public Works is really getting a shout out. And another unsung is Berks Emergency Services. Those calls coming in are not easy to take. And we want to make sure that they're getting resources too, because they're not easy, they're not easy calls to listen to. Thank you guys so much. Really, we really appreciate you guys coming forward and we really hope that you utilize the resources that we're offering and we're trying to get out.
Please. All right. If there's nobody else for public comment, I will close the floor and look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Ressler, second by Ms. Drobnik. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.